Eighteen minutes, my mom told me this weekend.
Eighteen minutes?
Yeah, eighteen minutes. Cause she can't drive at night, she's worried.
By the timer.
I'm coming for dinner one night.
Good evening, today is Monday, January sixth, two thousand twenty-five. I'd like to call the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting to order.
Lynn DeGrapo.
Troy Lemire.
Paul Marino.
Paul Harrington.
Todd Archalashi.
Glenn Albaneseus.
William Hester.
Andy Perez.
William Pozo.
Moving on to item number two, Pledge of the Legions. We have several members of the American Legion and the VFW. One of you would care to lead us in the Pledge of Legions?
The Pledge of Legions.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, agenda review? Nothing? He's not here yet. Uh, moving on to item number four, the approval of our minutes of our regular meeting from December sixteenth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bill. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Six oh one. Moving on to item number five, citizens' comments. The Board of Selectmen welcomes public comments. Speakers be limited to three minutes and may speak once. Does anyone wish to speak? Moving on to item number six, Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, welcome everybody and Happy New Year if I haven't talked to you since the, uh, the new year. Um, briefly, as, you know, we had a, a little bit of holiday time, uh, scheduled, but to start, uh, budget planning for fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six, we initiated our annual budget process with department, uh, submissions due to us by January sixteenth. Individual meetings have been set with each of the department heads to review their requests and their priorities. I've stated this and I think it's important to state it again, while we face significant, uh, fiscal challenges, you know, this upcoming year, I'm confident that, uh, uh, our effort in creative problem solving, that we can, uh, develop a reasonable budget that serves our community's needs. Our goal is to remain, uh, it, it remains to present a well-balanced proposal that earns voters' approval on the first ballot. Uh, I am very optimistic that we, we get approval on the first ballot. It's gonna require careful consideration of all options and strategic approach to resources and allocations. I look forward to working with each of our department heads to identify efficiencies while maintaining essential services for our residents. Last year, going through the budget process with, with you folks, it really showed where you were at with essential services and not wanting to cut those. So, you know, we'll keep that in mind as, as we present the budget, uh, to you all, uh, sometime in March. But there will be some, some challenges this year, uh, developing the budget. Staffing updates, uh, where this will go in two different areas. I'm pleased to report that the Police Department has reached their full staffing capacity. Where that sounds great right now, unfortunately, three of those positions are in the department or in the academy, with one of them just joining the academy on Friday. So where we are at a full complement, we won't get to see the, uh, benefits of having a full complement probably until the second half of two thousand twenty-five. So, good to know that each position that's been funded has been filled and it's gonna probably take us six months to get them out of the academy, get them through, uh, field training and then eventually, you know, out there. Um, unfortunately, we do have some, uh, staff members right now on workers' compensation, so we're, you know, we're, we're scrambling right now down there and not having, you know, the, the, uh, people from the academy ready to go when we're getting through. But by the second half of two thousand twenty-five, I'm hoping, uh, at the Police Department, um, we, we have smooth sailing. As you're well aware, uh, the town planner, uh, submitted his resignation, the town obviously accepted it. Um, right now, I'm in the process of evaluating the department and determining the most effective path forward. Nothing to report right now, as we know that relatively just happened. So right now, it's giving me an opportunity to sit down, evaluate that whole department and come up with the, with the best solution. Uh, and I'll obviously bring, bring that back to you. As a reminder, um, we still have some open positions. We're reposting the Fire Chief's position that has been reposted back, uh, out online into all the different, uh, department agencies, uh, that help, uh, recruit Fire Chief. Building Inspector position is also currently being advertised. And last but not least, we talked about a Clerk of the Works position. Uh, that position, we hope to have an offer out by the end of this week with a candidate. Uh, we're just, uh, finalizing some references and we, we should be able to fill that position, um, this month, uh, with hopes that, that'll expedite our spring project timeline. So Clerk of the Works position should be coming on this month. Technology update, it's been something that I've wanted to do for a while. Um, after looking through many different websites and looking at the cost, it's something that simply I don't think we can take on as a town right now. So I engaged Civic Lift, our current website provider, had a great meeting with them and in fact, they're coming in, in three weeks. Uh, where it's not gonna be a comprehensive overhaul, uh, we are gonna implement some user-friendly enhancements at absolutely zero cost to our town. Um, the updates are gonna make our more, our website more user-friendly and, and improve navigation for our residents. It's something, sure, I would love to, you know, come here and say, hey, you know, I need thirty thousand dollars for a brand-new website. It's just something that I don't feel comfortable doing right now, but I'm gonna work with Civic Lift. It's going to be no cost, we are gonna make some, uh, enhancements to our website and hopefully improve the user experience and, and more navigation-friendly, um, coming real, real soon. Environmental initiatives, if you haven't seen it on our website yet, uh, we updated or we have posted the Urban Tree Inventory Report. Um, it is now available on our town's website, it was done by Eric Christensen. It, uh, covers the trees between forty-seven Main Street and nine seventy Main Street and also includes East End Park. The assessment provides valuable data on species, composition and tree condition, along with maintenance recommendations. This report will guide future urban forestry efforts, including tree replacement strategies and overall enhancements to our town's trees canopy. If you haven't seen it, it is on our website. It's chock-full of information, it was, it was really, uh, interesting to read. Um, OSHA complacency, uh, as you know, we, we had a surprise OSHA inspection just before the holidays. Happy to report that this coming Wednesday, all day, we are, uh, partaking in the closing conference with OSHA. So we'll know exactly what we'll need to do moving forward. Happy to report that, uh, we will be out of the, uh, the OSHA, uh, uh, inspection, uh, as of this Wednesday. I will, I will note, if you're looking for me on this Wednesday, the inspector that's coming in has told me that he'll be here at nine in the morning and plan on being with him up until five o'clock at night. So if you're looking for me, unfortunately, I'll be stuck in a, a conference room, uh, going through all of the report. Uh, quickly, some community engagement events that happened. Uh, if you don't know, Whiting Mills, uh, was thirty years in business. I was invited to their holiday party, which was a very interesting holiday party that was put on by their owners. They actually did a potluck, uh, meal and they invited all of their shop tenants into the holiday lunch. The town recognized them with, was a certification of recognition of thirty years of being in business here in town. Um, and it was just simply an absolutely wonderful event. I got to meet the owners, got to have lunch with them. Um, so it was just something that I, I, I wanted to, uh, put out, uh, and let y'all know that, you know, they're thirty years. And last but not least, I, I met with Dakra Technology regarding traffic camera, speed camera systems. We're gonna discuss this topic a little bit more later on the agenda. I found it very interesting and I think once we get into it a little bit later on the agenda, I hope you all find it as interesting as, as I did and see what maybe we can unlock here in, uh, in Winston. With that, I'll, I'll open it up to any questions the board may have.
Questions? No questions. Moving on to item number seven, correspondence, does anyone have anything? Item eight, Boards and Commissions, we have nothing to report. Item nine, unfinished business. Item A, twenty-four dash fifty-B, consider and possibly act on the proposed revisions to ordinance number three six seven, vehicles and traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, in your packet, there's, there's two copies. There's one redlined version, um, and then there is one clean copy that just has the word draft on it. I put that together for a lot of different reasons and I took what Selectwoman DeGrapo had said, that we should be advertising this, that we should, you know, get in front of it and I wanna do that. But I wanna make sure that what we have in this draft policy is what you're all comfortable with before I go out on the website with it. One of the questions that was asked at our last meeting was, can we issue a first offense? They just get a little slap on the wrist and then, um, I talked with the Chief of Police. There's no way of doing that, unfortunately, no way of tracking that. His suggestion is the first thirty days, you just verbally warn the particular person that they're parking a vehicle illegally and then after certain date, that the finding mechanism would begin.
That seems reasonable.
And we can add that, um, uh, when you would like this policy to begin? Would it be, you know, our, our next meeting is obviously the twenty-first, which would be the third meeting of this ordinance. We can enact this starting, well, you could start it on January twenty-second, or you could say start it on February first. Give everybody, you know, the, the month of February as the warning period and then on March first, begin the actual ticketing or fining. But whatever the board, um, chooses. Last but not least, I believe, and I went back, thirteen thousand five hundred pounds is what the board had settled on and that's what you see, which, which in the ordinance.
I have a couple of questions. Um, did you refer this to an attorney?
Yes.
Okay. Last meeting, did we say that we were not going to use the word truck, we were going to use the word vehicle?
It seems that they've done that. While it says truck in the heading, it does say every motor vehicle or portion thereof, other than public safety, with a gross vehicle weight above thirteen thousand.
But should that truck be changed to vehicle?
Cause truck, yeah, cause truck is in the truck paragraph and it's also in the parking restriction paragraph. And we talked about motor vehicles, cause otherwise, that's what we decided at the last meeting.
I would change it to motor vehicles.
Change it to motor vehicles?
Yeah.
Cause if you do motor vehicles, it includes more than a truck and is, if that's our intent.
Yeah, it would, it would take, yeah, potentially motor homes, it would take all those things into account, so I, I, I agree that.
Yeah, I'm just putting no truck to motor vehicle.
Just make everything that says truck, motor vehicle.
Yeah, that's what my notes gonna be down here.
Yep.
Easy to do.
Um, and also, to get back to the, how it's going to be enforced. You know, it, I did speak with the chief today as well, because nothing's being enforced. People are still parking on sidewalks. And his comment was that there are not enough staff to ticket cars that are not obeying the rules. I mean, we can have as many policies and procedures and ordinances and rules and regulations, but if they're not enforced, it makes no sense. Um, I, I'm really concerned about how you're going to publicize this and how it's going to be enforced. Do you have a plan? What's your plan?
Uh, you know, that, it's a great question. So, the plan is, you know, obviously engaging our police officers, that they have to be actively looking for these type of violations, whether it's, you know, and, and I did have a conversation with the chief and I know what he had stated was, well, call us and we'll deal with it. Well, that's great, but not everybody's gonna pick up the phone and, and make a phone call. We do need more active policing. Now, the chief has come back and said, well, well, if we have more people, we can do more policing and we can do more active policing instead of just handling the caseloads that happen. So it becomes a question of, do we hire more officers to police better? Or can we manage what, with our current complement of twenty sworn officers to handle it? I find especially, you know, if they're going out, if they're patrolling, they should be looking for cars that are parked on sidewalks, cars that are parked illegally and if this ordinance finally goes through, they should be looking for these tractor-trailers that are parked overnight. Now, you know, third shift is overnight parking. You know, I, I know the call volume, we looked at the call volume, that third shift tends to be the leaser of the call volume. So I would think especially overnight policing, more of this type of, um, active policing can be done because they have the, the, the least amount of call volume compared to with all the stats and compared to first shift and second shift. So when we're looking at no parking overnight, our third shift is gonna be really reliant on enacting this ordinance because we're saying you can't park these vehicles overnight.
I, I have a, just a question to follow up on your, what you were saying. Is it fair to say that, I mean, at least in the last few years that I'm aware of, we've not had a full complement of officers in our department? We just haven't. I think now, we finally have them hired, but we still have, we're still three short, cause they're going through the academy and training. So, and prior to us being involved with this board, the complement of police officers had gotten down to a critical level. So that said, it, it stands to reason that now that they are going to be at full force by the second half of this year, that our expectation will be that that, this ordinance, as well as the other things that you talk about, will be enforced. And, um, that's gonna be our expectation and the chief's gonna have to understand that. So, I mean, I, we haven't had the staffing for a number of years, but it would seem to me that we're pretty damn close to having it now.
I have a question about that, though. Right now, we, he's ordering people in to cover shifts, right? So it's like three, I, it's gonna go three per shift, right?
Yep.
Okay. So if we're ordering people in and we're paying overtime for three per shift, how will that change with more officers? It'll just be different officers, it won't be more than three. So how is that gonna change the parking enforcement? Because you're not gonna add in a fourth person to go parking enforcement. You're, you're still gonna have the same three sections there, whether you have new people or not. Um, so I think that, that's, that's probably a little, um, little, uh, data point there. But the other thing is, we used to have a parking enforcement person that wasn't a police officer that went around and, and did some parking on Main Street and would bring in as much money and tickets as was the position, except that it, with health benefits, it did get a little bit more expensive for a parking attendant than it, than it was before. So, um, you know, in turn, it's the same thing that happens, you know, on the lake with not having a marine patrol and, and, you know, the safety of all that. I, I think the, probably the most frustrating thing about sidewalks are the new sidewalks that we just paid for, that I think are really frustrating to people about people parking on those. Uh, so I, I don't know if we can, um, you know, how, how you fix all that, so.
So, I think everybody just brought up a good point, is when you get to the full complement and Selectwoman Perez is, is right, well, if you have, you know, the order ends and you're at three, how much more policing? But I think when you do return to a full complement, you could possibly look at overstaffing of a particular shift, where with an overstaffing individual, that individual can go out and do these type of enforcements that we're looking to do. Simply right now, we can't do an overstaff, we just don't have the full body. So it is something as we approach that full complement, that we can look at overstaffing, cause when you look at twenty positions and you look at the way the schedule's made up, we may be able to overstaff some shifts, not necessarily with overtime, but just simply put, the way the schedule is made up, that we could have an overstaffing of an additional officer on a particular shift.
And I suspect that once you give out a few tickets, you won't have the problem anymore. You know, I mean, though, you know, for a while, there won't be any, anybody doing it and then, and then you'll have to remind them again down the road, so it doesn't have to be an overstaff for a long period of time. I would think that, you know, word will spread. I mean, Facebook will be good at it and, uh, people will say, I got this ticket and, and then off they'll go and they'll remember.
Speaking with the chief today, he did say that, you know, the, the public needs to be proactive as well, that they need to contact him. And I'm thinking that you, you know, you did a community awareness when, the last time we had problems with parking on the new sidewalk, but it was only a day, a week, not even a full week, and then it stopped. Um, and I think it would be wise to do it frequently and also on that, to give the Winston Police Department phone number, eight six zero three seven nine two seven two one, for residents to call if they see something wrong. Um, I saw on social media just this weekend that people were parking in no parking zones on Elm Street. On Facebook, no one thought to call the Police Department. But if they don't know and they don't have that information. And again, Facebook, the last time, was the only place where the outreach went regarding the illegal parking on the sidewalks, because the other social media networks were down. Have they been fixed?
They have not, we are still looking to get that login information. We have sent emails to the particular agencies to try and get that login information. Um, that is something that we need to work on as a town, that when management changes, those passwords, those usernames, all of that should be, you know, it took a few months just for me to have Facebook access.
Will Civic Lift be able to help you do that?
They will not, because they don't have actual rights to Nextdoor or any of those other providers. It's actually reaching out to those website providers to get the login information as we are the agency. Um, so Civic Lift can't, they just literally put the IP address, which is a clickable link at the bottom of the page.
I think, that has to be corrected.
Agreed.
And the former town manager won't send them?
Uh, Terry has reached out and to no avail, we have not gotten a response, so. Yeah, I, uh, it, it's, it's a tough situation. We have emailed the particular agencies, you know, obviously you've all gotten emails from me, you can see my credentialings at the bottom, um, to try and get that access, um, to these particular websites. Um, and to date, I've not had any success of unlocking, um, getting into those particular websites.
Okay, so are you going to send another draft of this? Because next meeting will be the third meeting, but I'm not going to approve it until I see it in a final, good draft with corrections that we talked about last time made.
I, I can, excuse me, I can send, excuse me, I can send out a final draft, uh, tomorrow. What I have written right now is every time it says the word truck, change to motor vehicle. Is there any other corrections?
I guess I also had a question about the, um, prohibited streets. You have just one street.
That was.
I, I know that's an old, but we have other streets that are in poor repair and I don't know what the reason was for Case Avenue and Ga, and Gay Street, but that route was, but there's other streets.
A hundred percent agreed. I actually questioned it when, when we pulled this ordinance up and nobody was able to, it was done years and years ago of why those streets prohibited trucks from actually traveling on it. Um, when we initially started this, we looked at a much larger ordinance of possibly banning, uh, vehicles, um, from parking in residential neighborhoods. And then we came to the meeting sometime, I think in November, and said, let's just simplify it to start. Let's just take care of a problem that we knew came, uh, came forward, of banning these types of large vehicles on our residential roads and that's what's before us. But we could definitely later on, you know, add additional streets that we don't wanna have truck traffic on. But right now, we're not proposing, um, prohibiting any truck traffic on any additional streets than what's already in the ordinance that was passed.
Okay.
Just, just a thought on that, could you add a line that says, and on any posted street? Cause you could post a sign on a street, no trucks permitted. Is that possible or do you have to name the street?
I have to find out, I don't know the answer to that, um.
You know, cause I mean, when you drive in different neighborhoods and different towns and everywhere, there's like no through trucks, no this, no that. So could you cover the basis for, without having to redo an ordinance in the future, instead of being very specific on certain streets, which would require the coordination internally and changing it like this, to just have it be a, you know, posted street? Because I imagine that when there is a, when a truck can't go on the street, like on Case Avenue, I'm assuming there's a no truck sign.
Yes, there is a no truck sign, I've seen it, yes.
So, maybe it could be, you know, posted streets or po, or streets with posted no truck.
And since the ordinance talks about motor vehicles and not trucks, the postings have to say motor vehicles and then post the gross vehicle weight restriction on the posted sign, I would think, including Case Avenue now, which will need to be updated.
Yep. Um, interesting question, I, I, I don't wanna comment one way or the other. If, if we could do that, posted street, some of me probably thinks that we may need to list each street, but I wanna find out. But going back to, um, Selectwoman DeGrapo's, if we get rid of the words, um, truck and we change it to motor vehicle, obviously we'll find out about, or any posted street, any other corrections and then, when do we want this to start? In thirty days? Just some questions that I started with, that I just wanna circle back to see if we can get some answers on.
I think you need to do a, a thirty, uh, fifteen to thirty-day notice through Facebook on the website and if you have any, uh, bills going out.
I don't, but I can put it in the next, you know, as a reminder, as we did on, on the, on the bills that went out over the summer.
Why, why are we gonna have the Everbridge up?
It's probably looking at March sometime, there's a lot of back office stuff, but it's probably looking at, at, at March and then obviously there's, that's when we have it up and then there's the whole recruitment of getting, you know, active numbers and getting subscribers. So, we're still a few months away from being able to unlock the, the full potential of, you know, blasting these messages out to our residents.
Aren't Waters who are bills going out soon?
They are, but that, that'll only go to Waters who are users, they won't go to everybody else.
That would be nothing.
I mean, I could see doing a, um, fifteen, thirty-day notice and then a, then as we talked about earlier, a thirty-day, maybe forty-five-day warning period where the police would issue warnings before we start actually doing fines. I mean, that's giving folks a lot of an opportunity to be notified, even if they're notified with a warning, you know, next one's a ticket.
Yeah, I was just trying to back into my head, so you send out.
April first for finding, right.
January gives you, you basically have February, March and then. April first finding?
Mm-hmm.
So you're given, yeah, you're given thirty to forty-five days with bills, obviously, you know, campaigns on social media, websites. Um, um, fine with all of that.
I mean, I don't think anybody could think that that's being unfair. We're, we're certainly putting out plenty of notices and.
Talking about it for several months already.
So we would finalize this at the next meeting, right?
Um.
Cause that'll be the third meeting.
That would be the third meeting.
So that's, that's end of January, so we'd make it effective February first and then have the fifteen days or thirty days of notice, thirty days of, um, which takes us out to April first.
Which takes us out to April first, yep. I'm fine with that. I will, I will get you all a, a, a final draft, um, earlier this week than, hopefully tomorrow. Um, and, uh, you should be able to get that done. Thank you. So before you run off, in the meantime, if anybody sees anybody parking on the sidewalk or illegal parking, please call the Police Department, three seven nine two seven two one. Don't hesitate. Pull the trigger.
When, how early do you call?
Well, the ordinance. I mean, this won't go into effect until, as we said, February first, effective date, thirty days of publication, thirty days of warnings, so. I mean, once it goes into effect February first, technically warnings could be issued, I suppose, in, in that period of time as well. So you'd have sixty days of warnings effectively. So, I mean, the public could start calling the police whence this goes into effect February first.
Can I make your comment or do I need you to wait?
Uh, let's, let's wait.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Selectmen recognize this as the second of three public meetings where a revision to ordinance number three sixty-seven must be discussed and that revision of this ordinance be referred to the next for the second step in the revision process.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Moving on to new business, item A, Historic Commission.
Moving on to new business, item A, Historic Commission CT two fifty planning information.
Thank you very much for inviting me tonight, folks. Uh, my name is Hamish Lutcher and I'm representing the Winchester Historic Commission. Uh, and I'm going to tell you just a tiny bit about the commission itself and also what we're doing, especially with uh, CT two fifty, which is Connecticut's version of USA two fifty, a celebration of the beginning of our nation's history. Um, the Historic Commission was formed in August twenty twenty-three. It's a nine-person commission. And basically it has a fairly wide purview. We're looking at um, enhancing the historic sites that are pretty common in in Winchester and Winstead. We're looking at uh, creating and just deploying signage, which will help people understand a little bit about the history of the town and hopefully raise its historical profile a little bit. Um, we're also looking at uh, creating connections in the community. And so uh, the Historic Commission is really interested in getting a lot of people involved in the history of Winchester and Winstead. And to do that, we're looking at uh, folks in the Beardsley Library, for instance, Historical Society, Northwestern Community College, uh, public schools, scouting, and also public organizations like uh, the VFW, the Rotary, Elks, uh, the Grange. Um, also what we're looking for are uh, events and we're putting them on mainly as a facet of what we're calling uh, CT two fifty. Now, I'm not sure if you're familiar with CT two fifty, but just a a second of explanation. CT two fifty is Connecticut's version of USA two fifty, which is a celebration of the beginning of the nation's history, which is going to take place, really the the high point of it will take place in July of twenty twenty-six, the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the announcement of the Declaration of Independence. Um, actually, the celebrations for this are going to begin sometime in the spring because in April twenty twenty-five is actually the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Battles of Lexington and Concord, which be, set the nation on course to become the United States of America. Now, to do that, what we're looking at is a couple of things. Um, CT two fifty is a statewide organization uh, that is actually pretty beneficial to the Historic Commission. First of all, uh, we are an affiliate of CT two fifty. This is an application process that we filled out. This enables us to go for uh, grant money and also to get CT two fifty advertising, which is very important. As I'm sure you're aware, advertising is very expensive, but if you can do it on a statewide basis through somebody else's organization, it is very beneficial for us. And what we're looking at as an affiliate of CT two fifty is really to to uh, create two types of events that are going to move forward, beginning in twenty twenty-five, in fact, beginning in January of twenty twenty-five, and then moving through July twenty twenty-six. Um, uh, there's really two types of events that we're looking at right now. And one is an ongoing series of uh, of public events, speaking events that would deal with various aspects of the American historical experience. The first of those is going to be in January eighteenth at the Beardsley Library at ten thirty in the morning. It's a Saturday. And actually, I'm kind of putting a plug in for myself because I'll be the person speaking there. Um, and we'll be speaking about liberty and the American experience, this idea of freedom as it was kind of manifested in the United States, as opposed to other places and at other times in history. Bless you.
Thank you.
Um, we're also looking at doing a couple of events that are kind of ongoing, mainly s- uh, focused on the refurbishing, uh, the restoring, the cleaning, and the interpreting of the the many veterans' graves that we find throughout Winchester and Winstead. As you're probably aware, there are great many cemeteries and also burying grounds in Winstead. A lot of them will carry gravestones from veterans of the Revolution, eighteen twelve, Mexico, si- uh, Civil War and and of course through the twentieth century wars. And what we would like to do is really kind of call the town's attention to how important their contribution is to the history of the United States. And we're going to be looking at doing that by again, kind of restoring, cleaning, and interpreting uh, those those gravestones. Right now, that's what we're looking at. Um, and uh, it was very interesting to uh, listen to the the parts of that you were speaking about with uh, uh, web help because that is really something that we're interested in as well. It's kind of expanding uh, our presence on the the internet. We do have a section on the town webpage, which we would like to make bigger. Um, but we'll see what happens in the future. I was kind of interested in in what you're doing with IT, so I thank you for that information. Um, but other than that, folks, that's basically where we stand right now. Um, and I'd be happy to take any kind of questions that the board has for me.
Questions?
I I'd just like to offer you the Winchester two fifty Facebook page.
Wow.
I would be glad, cause I'm one of the ones that was doing that. And so we would be glad to give you administrative rights to it.
That would be fantastic. Actually, this is the first time I've heard of this too, so.
Cause it has a base.
Yeah.
And they tell me that you're not supposed to like go start new Facebook pages when you could use one that's already established with people on it already.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know too much about Facebook, but I know that part. So I'd be glad to give you the administrative rights to it. And you could like even rebrand it Winchester two fifty and or something else and use the.
Winchester and.
Cause there's some history, there's some history in that already that other people have posted, but be glad to give that to you.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Other questions?
Yeah, Hamish, didn't you have, you had to sign up for this two fifty, right? And we're one of the first ones in the state to actually sign up for this.
Yeah, they.
Remember what you said at the meeting.
Yeah, at at the various meetings of the CT two fifty people, um, basically what happens is people are are asked to form commissions on CT two fifty. And we already have, we're we're an affiliate now. I have a feeling that what's gonna happen is that beginning in April, when you have the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Lexington and Concord, that's April nineteenth, I have a feeling that's gonna speed up a lot. Um, and what we're probably gonna see is that about a year from now, January twenty twenty-six, people are gonna start getting very frantic about their events and preparing. So I do think we're in a very good position for it right now. We've started early and I think we've got some solid progress behind us.
Uh, Hamish, I'll be in touch with you. I've got some grave stuff for you.
Oh, that'd be fantastic. Thank you very much.
And then maybe we should just grab a quick phone call or something as we make website enhancements.
Yeah.
Just tell me maybe what, you know, you're looking for. I can't promise it, but let's see if we can.
No, it's, that's fantastic because that was really the thing that we need more than anything and I'm sure you do as well. So it's not a an uncommon request.
We can talk.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think there'd be an audience for really enhancing the historical part side of the website, honestly. People really enjoy looking at a lot of the old photos. I mean, a lot of that circulates through Facebook um, in town. I think the idea of having it all showcased as a portion of the town website, I think would be great, actually.
Right now, we're also going for a grant. It's called a museum makeover grant. As an affiliate, we're we're, we can access certain grant materials. And this is for fifty-six hundred dollars. What we're looking for is actually a mobile interpretive unit that we can buy. They they sell these. And what we are thinking is we could actually publicize various aspects of the town's history through this way. That we could put it in the library, public schools, town hall, senior centers, that people would be able to actually access it that way as well.
It's great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Moving on to item B, recognition of S J Nguyen Construction for their purple heart roof donation. Scott, one of the, thank you for being here today. And as you can see, there's a a large audience for you um, to recognize your work that you did for the town. One of our treasured assets in the town is our veterans. So on behalf of the town of Winchester, the town of Winchester recognizes Scott J Nguyen Construction LLC. The Purple Heart Roof Project was started by Scott Nguyen, owner of S J Nguyen Construction LLC. Scott collaborated support with his industry partners, Gaff Roofing, ABC Supply Company Incorporated, and USA Waste and Recycling, with the intent to give back to a local veteran in need by providing a no-cost roof replacement. Scott's collaboration resulted in his partners covering all materials while Scott covered all labor costs. Scott reached out to the VFW Post two nine six for assistance in identifying a local Purple Heart com- combat vet. As you can imagine, identifying a Purple Heart veteran was no easy task. In the end, two-time Purple Heart recipient, Vietnam veteran Pastor David McGee, Corporal, United States Marine Corps, Winstead, Connecticut, was identified and became the recipient of a roof replacement. The roof was replaced in one day on May ninth, two thousand twenty-four at his home in Winstead. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen and the town manager would like to thank Scott and his partners for their generosity. Anyone on the board? Anything to add?
I think you did a good job, Todd. Thank you, Scotty.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
True patriot.
Move on to item C, a draft of municipal purchasing policy. Um, so a little advance uh, note that when we do receive our final audit, uh, we will have a material weakness uh, letter uh, in that audit. The auditors have pointed out that uh, our municipality does not have a purchasing policy. So we worked diligently on creating what we're calling a municipal purchasing policy, which is being required by our auditors. Fortunately, this is not the first time that an auditor has stated that um, the town did not have a purchasing policy. I had dealt with this in a prior town I worked in. So uh, before you tonight is a draft policy that the auditors are looking for. Um, this was written with conjunction with uh, our bond counsel and also the auditors, uh, basically looking at every aspect of purchasing and attaching a policy to it. Um, it is something that I would like to eventually adopt sooner rather than later, obviously. I know that's uh, quite extensive and you may be looking at it at the first time, but I can tell you that um, Pullman and Comley have looked at it, our auditors have looked at it. They have uh, said that it is a very complete and full document and and would like to see the town adopt the policy um, just as written.
Is this a policy that you as the CEO uh, put into place with the finance people? Or is this something that we adopt as an ordinance type?
This is, you know, we 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 looked at that. This is something that I would like the board to adopt to really show the strength behind the purchasing policy. Sure, as CEO, I I could adopt the policy, but with a material weakness letter being provided with the audit, I really wanted to show the seriousness that the town took, that the Board of Selectmen had buy-in on it, and that this is a policy moving forward that the town is is using.
Just asking for process.
Other questions?
Yeah, I got, I got one. Was it always um, it's in the purchasing threshold, D M L, was it always less than the four thousand nine ninety-nine ninety-nine? Uh, four, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we we took that right out of the charter, actually.
Okay.
There there was obviously revisions that that needed. This, that's a complete snapshot of what's currently in our charter.
What about the uh, fiscal year bid waiver threshold? That seems to me like something that moves. It's a moving target.
These?
What page are you on?
Page four also. It says five thousand to current fiscal year bid waiver threshold and then three percent is the next level that talks about um.
So it would change, obviously, as your, as your budget changes. So um, yes, it it, as your budget goes up, obviously, the the amount goes up. If the budget goes down, obviously, the.
So what is, for example, what do you, do you know what the current, or do we not have a current bid waiver threshold?
We do, and we changed it in a charter revision.
Yeah, the last charter.
And is that where this, the third, third uh, part of the table comes from?
Yes, that's where.
The first two are just gonna be ones that you're instituting, cause we changed the bid thresholds in a charter revision that went to the voters.
So this box, we literally in in, the four ninety-nine and the five thousand are actually in the charter. We just literally took that box and and placed it into the document.
My question was really about, it sounds like based on the fiscal year that that bid waiver threshold is a moving target. Am I wrong in that?
No, you're a hundred percent right.
It is because we made it be like an inflation adjusting type number. So we didn't have to keep coming back.
For this fiscal year, what is the current bid waiver threshold?
You would ask me those, um, sorry. I, yeah, off the top of my head, I don't know our total budget and I want to give you an accurate number, but it's our total budget. You know, obviously, times point oh three percent could get you that number.
Well, first, I, we need to know what the, I'm not gonna belabor it anymore, but I'm just curious what the threshold is because the first box is five thousand, within five thousand of the current bid waiver threshold, you have to get at least three vendors bids. And then if it's, the second one is where it's more complicated. If it's within three point three percent total expenditures, then you have to go through that next process. So I was just curious what the.
But do you also have in here too? Because I know that some of you are using the state bid contracts as not having to do the town of Winchester bidding because you're using something from the state. And is that in here too?
That is in there as well.
Piggybacking is in there.
Is in here.
And and one of the, the other, in in where we got uh, dinged on our audit is that we, we never talked about the SAM dot gov where the town should not award or solicit to any vendors that have been federally suspended or disbarred or debarred. That was never in any practical day-to-day and that was something that the auditors had called out that we need to really put emphasis that before we award any contract, that anybody that's awarding the contract does need to check on the SAM to make sure that they're not debarred, you know, federally. So.
So this was a new thing that they asked for because we've done, if it was there before, we would have had it. Cause I know that we're updating everything. So this is a new policy that they feel municipalities should have.
Correct. Um, it it, it boggled my mind when this was brought up in in a prior town. It boggled my mind where we've been going years and years and years without any, and now all of a sudden it becomes this huge red flag. And we all know that the the the, that the SAM uh, website has been available for several years, but why all of a sudden they're starting? And we're not the only municipality that was dinged on a purchasing, purchasing policy over the last few years. Um, I question that as well, but it is spelled out on page five. I do also um, want to bring to your attention the uh, tax delinquent vendors, which is on page ten. That no employer or town official shall award any bid or contract to any business or individual against which any taxes or sewer user fees are deemed to be delinquent. I'll also point out that any vendor that has an outstanding top tax obligation, i.e. delinquent status to the municipality's owed, uh, payment by the municipality for goods or service rendered may have their outstanding tax balance offset by the payment that's owed. So, one, if you're given a contract and you weren't on the delinquent tax list, you, but then if you become delinquent, we're not necessarily going to be reaching into our pocket to pay your uh, invoice. We're going to subtract it off the taxes um, to keep it um, fair um, in terms of that. So we we, we do have, and that is by state statute that we're permitted to do that. Um, so we've added it to the purchasing policy. Other questions?
Yeah, I was just curious about the Board of Ed back on page three.
Yep.
Um, exclusive of, they have their own. Um, how different is theirs from this? And did, have they had to revise their, revise theirs?
An excellent question. So I did talk to our new superintendent. Um, they are in the process of redoing their purchasing policy as well.
Okay.
One of the, the auditors did say that we do need to include the Board of Ed if they don't have their own purchasing policy. They currently have one but are reworking it and the superintendent has stated that that is a priority for them to get done as well.
Similar to this?
I haven't seen it yet. Be, um, as the superintendent said, let me get you a new one once we're done with it. But they are in the works of of getting one done. Anything else?
So I for one am glad to see that this is happening. Um, we've, we've, you know, I, in the, in the time that I've been on this board, I know that we've purchased one, maybe two um, police cruisers. And I was kind of surprised that they were just one-offs. They didn't go out to bid.
Typically the state bids on.
They weren't, but these weren't, these were bought at a local dealership that, that no one mentioned anything about the bids. And I know we can piggyback the state bids cause they, they buy hundreds of them. We buy two or three and we can get the advantage of that. So. So, but I know we've bought them without the bid process and I gotta believe we could have saved some money. So I'm glad to see that we're doing something in this regard to, you know, get a better handle on purchases that we're making, both big and small.
Agreed. I, uh, I'd, I'd be remiss if I, if I didn't bring this. So, you know, I started in April and my original email was sometime in the middle of May, where I reached out to our finance director, to Tom and to Don, and saying, hey, I think we should develop a purchasing policy. And unfortunately, things got busy, things got, you know, shuffled around. It fell in between the cracks and now, obviously, we have this material weakness, which then put it in front of everybody's face where this needed to be done. Either way, it was going to happen because in May, purchasing was pretty much done for the year. We were going to get dinged with it regardless. But getting the, the, the material weakness with the audit made this put, uh, top priority. So, uh, we started talking about this actually back in May, the importance of having a purchasing policy. Just hearing the history of this town, I thought it was important that we have a policy, a guideline. So we, 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 we continue to keep the trust of, of the public as, as we use, you know, their hard-earned money to operate government.
If you look at these purchasing thresholds and, and these policies, these are extremely similar to, to most corporate purchasing policies with the thresholds.
Anything else?
So what's the timing on acting on this? So what, when are you, when do you need us to? And again, it's not an ordinance, it's not a, you're just looking for us to, to vote on it and say, we accept this as written? Is that what you're...
Um, yes, and I, I would like to get this done sooner rather than later. I know there's eleven pages to digest with a, a lot of information. Am I too aggressive by saying, can we put it on the next, uh, Board of, uh, Selectmen's agenda to possibly act on enacting this policy? Do we want to do it in February? I don't know what the board's schedule is.
Personally, I can read eleven pages in two weeks and digest it, so I'm, I'm all right with next meeting.
I think the next meeting's very busy.
I...
And I would wait.
Okay.
And I reason I would wait is because I think, I think it would be good for us to go through this all together and, and have Ann Marie here to talk about it. And especially when we get to page ten, which are town personnel contracting. And because it affects all the boards and commissions, not just this board here. And we're talking about like a, you know, one percent interest and, and spouses. And I, I think it'd be very good to be clear on what this means. Um, and just, you know, reading it here, I could kind of think I know what it means, but I think it would be important for us to know what this means. Because, uh, you know, it talks about business in town and consulting and all that kind of stuff, or contracting. And a lot of people do a lot of things in town, so... So I think it'd be good to, to look at that part. I think, uh, I mean, I haven't looked at any of the much other parts, but I think it would be good to go through it all together because once you do this, then it's going to be there and, you know...
The fiscal guard rails would, would be turned on once you do it, um, and...
So, yeah.
I, I will, I will state that, um, looking ahead at, at the, at the calendar and knowing, um, some, some time off with our finance director, where typically she comes in at the second meeting of the month. The second meeting in February, she will not be present. I will have financial reports, I plan on giving it. So I would possibly look at doing it the first meeting of February, or we could kick it to the second meeting in March. Or we could possibly bring in Ann Marie to the first meeting in March and the second meeting in March. Whichever the Bo, the board feels most comfortable.
Well, are we in a hurry to do this because we want it in place for July first when we start issuing purchase orders? Are we, because the audit's already gonna...
The audit's already gonna...
The audit's already gonna make the comment.
Yep.
Right, so they're gonna make the comment already. We're assuming that everybody's acting correctly with purchasing and stuff right now. We just need the words to go with it. So is there a rush?
Procedurally, there is no rush. I would like, when the auditors come in personally, not any other reason that, when the auditors come in and they read the material weakness letter, that we can say, we have completed that task.
And that is when?
That would be probably sometime in, the, the audit better be done by the end of this month. So then the auditors would come in anytime in February or March, you know, when we invite them in, we have time on our schedule. But that is just a personal preference. This board has every right to say, we'll just get it enacted by, you know, June thirtieth, by July first.
Would it be possible at the first February meeting to have Ann Marie present and we could walk through this thing? And, and I don't know what the February first, or the early, let's say that again. I don't know what the first February meeting looks like for an agenda yet. We know that the second one in January is going to be pretty busy. Um, but do we have time for this in February and would she be available? First meeting in February.
Right now, I know the only item that is, obviously, there's other items, but the, the item that we know is coming for that first meeting in February is E D C is coming in to that meeting. Um, which, you know, could be a lengthy discussion with them. Um, let me find out schedules. How's the board feeling about that first meeting in February?
Well, I know the next meeting that we have, you have planning and zoning coming.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
And, and so, yeah.
Yeah, I think the first February meeting, because once we get into March, it's going to be budget discussions.
And I think, to your point, if we did it in the first meeting in February and we had comfort with it, we could potentially get it done and then you've got it checked off the list for when they come in.
All right. And, and then I would just say, in the meantime, as you, you look through it, if you, if you see something you want clarification, by all means, get ahold of me. Um, I, I could, um, look at why we did a particular thing, so, okay. Thank you.
Moving on to item D, discussion regarding speed enforcement.
So as stated earlier in, in my, uh, in my Town Manager's report, um, I did meet with our Chief of Police, um, with any, um, and there was, that was it from, from the town side of things. I met with Dakra Tech Traffic Logic about the whole speed camera, uh, implementation of possibly putting one on Main Street. Even at warp speed, and we decided they're the company we want to go with. I am speaking with another company on Thursday, so getting prices and all of that. Even at warp speed, we're probably not looking at getting this camera installed until midsummer. And that's moving at warp speed, checking all the boxes and having the D O T lockstep with us. This is not something that we can do simply overnight. I can tell you that, that, that the first step, which we have ordered, because it was free of charge, is to do a traffic study where we're going to lay, you know, a, a line across the road. That will be here in anywhere from two to three weeks. Then that'll stay on one side for a week, then it'll switch to the other side. Then Dakra Tech will take all of that information to see if Main Street checks all of the boxes in terms of being able to put a camera there. A little bit background, so, um, they presented their, their, their safe pace speed camera system, which uses radar technology to detect and photograph vehicles exceeded posted speed limits. The system operates twenty-four seven and captures clear images of the license plate even in low light conditions. They showed us examples. I was simply amazed by the quality of the actual photo that's taken. Um, Main Street has been identified as a priority zone through the proximity of the, of residential areas, local businesses, and heck, just me sitting in my office, I hear the speed driving by my office. Um, technical stuff, it's high-resolution imaging, night vision, um, it's solar power option with battery backup. If we go that option, it's a much simpler option because we put our poll up. If we were to go and want to use a, a light pole, we will then need to get EverSource to sign off on possibly grabbing the electric from them. Dakra Tech has stated a majority of their customers throughout the country are using the solar, uh, system as well. Um, it's got four G L T, LTE, um, real-time data transmission, so it's, it's moving at decent speeds. Cost structure, Dakra Tech will give us our first camera for free. It's not always for free, so the first camera is free. And for every ticket that we issue, it's thirteen dollars and fifty cents that would go to Dakra. If we issue a warning, it's six dollars. By state statute, the first offense can only be fifty dollars. The second offense can be seventy-five dollars. After thirty days, it's a rolling thirty days, whatever data you gathered needs to be wiped from the system. That is by state statute. So example of this is I speed on Main Street on the first of January. I speed again on the second of February. I'm back to the fifty-dollar fine because on the first, the data was deleted. Um, the...
Paul, I'm sorry. Uh, just to be clear, the fines collected, do they go to the town or that's the state?
The, the fines collected would come to the town. I'm going to get into that a little bit more. So the fines collected come directly to us. When we issue a ticket, somebody would go into the system daily, weekly. I can tell you that in one particular town, uh, that they pointed out, within the first week, they had ten thousand violations. There's some man-hours that are going to be put into this. Ten thousand violations that somebody had to go in. And there are three options when you go into the system and you look at each particular image.
That was the first week or month?
That was the first week.
That's basically everybody coming down forty-four again.
Well, we have, we have, down by C V S, there's at least eighteen thousand doll, eighteen thousand cars a day go by there. And out here is at least twelve thousand. And that is data from that road study from like eight, ten years ago. So it could only be more now.
So my, my question, somebody downstairs in the police department has to sit and send out those ten thousand?
So let me get into the, let me get into the process of it. So every day or every week, somebody would go into the system and you would see the amount of violations, whether it's daily or whether it's weekly or whether it's every couple of days. The particular person that is assigned to reviewing the data will have three options. The first option is issue a citation, which they click citation. Then Dakra takes the information, they then mail the, the ticket to the individual person. I think it's also important to note that the violation gets mailed to the motor vehicle owner. If you let your friend drive your car and they are caught in our speed zone, your friend does not get the ticket, the way the statute has been written in the state of Connecticut. The owner of the motor, and I'm putting it all out there so the board can, you know, discuss this. The actual violation goes to the owner of the motor vehicle. First option is a ticket, fifty dollars. As soon as whoever is charged with issuing the citation, Dakra will mail or will bill Winston thirteen dollars and fifty cents. There is no guarantee that individual will pay the fifty-dollar fine. Another thing, the actual violation has no reporting to the D M V. There's no points on your license. Dakra says you are going to want to enroll in a collection agency because you're paying them thirteen fifty dollars, thirteen dollars and fifty cents to issue the ticket. There is no guarantee we are getting our fifty dollars in return. The other option that whoever's reviewing the data has the option to warn the particular individual. If they hit the warn button, Dakra will bill the town six dollars. There is no recovery of any type of money because it's a warning and warnings attach no money. And this is important to also note, and this was a sticking point on the conference call. The first thirty days that the cameras are in, the camera is installed, there can be no violation issued, no ticket issued. I said, so, and we have to warn people. I said, if we're going to warn ten thou, and I use ten thousand drivers, I don't want to pay six dollars for every warning that we issued. That is a sticking point.
With zero return.
I can see why, with zero return. Maybe I see why the camera is for free. They said, well, we can discuss that, but we typically don't reduce the fee within the first. So I'm interested to see this next company coming in on Thursday. It was a very eye-opening, you know, conversation that we had with them in that the first thirty days per state statute, I can't issue any citation. I can only issue warnings. At six dollars a warning, depending on how much traffic we get out there, it could get very pricey in the first thirty days. How do we ever recoup our dollars?
Well, but that's by our choice, right? Because we opt whether we issued a warning or not, right?
That is correct, but by statute, we have to issue warnings the first thirty days.
But do we have to do anything? In other words, we get the infraction, we have a choice of a violation or a, um, warning, or can we just ignore it?
You could ignore it, yep.
And then there's no fee.
There is no fee.
And nobody knows you're doing it.
And nobody, and, and then nobody knows you're doing it and it goes back to what we discussed earlier. How do we get people to actually listen to...
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, where is the state statute in terms of if you send out a fine and don't collect, what happens to the person who didn't pay the fine? Is there, for example, if you don't pay your property tax, that information goes to motor vehicles and you can't re-register your car until it's paid, right? What is the penalty for not paying a speeding ticket?
Collections.
Collections.
That's it.
That is it. Uh, this is not reported to the D M V. Um, now, if you look at when the statute was passed, they had said, we're doing this just so we can at least get something out there. Speaking with certain people in Hartford, they are going to go back and revisit, possibly extend the thirty days. I can't make any promises because nothing has been proposed yet, but there is no mechanism of getting the fifty dollars or possibly in, oh, by the way, the second offense, if it happens in thirty days, only goes to seventy-five dollars. I, I think I, I didn't mention that. I mentioned, okay, wasn't sure if I mentioned that. So, um, we would need to employ a collection company. Now, the other option we have is that we can issue a thirteen dollars and fifty cents processing fee when they go in and pay their ticket. Meaning, we can get our full fifty dollars and we can add, per the statute, add an additional thirteen dollars and fifty cents.
My, my fine becomes sixty-three fifty.
Sixty-three fifty.
Because you're paying for the company that owns the camera.
But, but here's my question, though. I, I come seventy miles an hour down forty-four.
Mm-hmm.
I see the speed camera, I blow through it anyway. I'm going to get a bill in the mail from a company called Dakra.
You're going to...
I, I owe them sixty-three dollars and fifty cents because I was speeding on Main Street in Park Campstead, Winston, wherever I went through on these cameras. And I know it's not tied to motor vehicles, so I go, now, I gotta get a collection company that's going to call me and say, you owe us sixty-three dollars and fifty cents and, and, but we have to pay for that service.
So collection, so I want to go back and you brought up an excellent point. Um, when the actual citation gets mailed, it is going to look like it came from the town of Winston. It's very marketed as if it came from us with our seal, everything like that. Yes, it's coming from their mailing house, but it, it is going to look like it's an official document from the town, not from Dakra Tech.
It is an official document, they're just a mechanism to deliver it.
Correct. Um, secondly, when it comes to collections, now, collections, I'm, I'm not well-versed in all of collecting, but typically what you do is you sell your bad debt to a collection agency at a fraction of what's owed. And then they go out and, you know, do whatever they have to do in order to collect the money that, you know, we're going to get a fraction of it.
Typically, ten cents on the dollar you sell your debt for.
It could be.
So six dollars and thirty-five cents. Which doesn't even cover the thirteen dollars and fifty cents.
I'm, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, Paul, but in a community like this, right? People struggling economically when they're getting, you know, you gotta pay your credit card, you gotta pay your taxes, you gotta pay your car payment, are going to get a sixty-three-dollar ticket in the mail.
Some will pay it because they'll think, they'll be concerned that it's a legal document that maybe has some teeth. The problem is, those who know it doesn't have a lot of teeth will throw it in the garbage and you'll sell it for ten cents on a dollar.
And then it'll affect their credit. Because those agencies report to credit.
If you, if, if, if you're behind in your car payments, your taxes, everything else, you're, you're worried about a sixty-three-dollar ticket hitting your, I'm, I'm just saying, you'll, you'll collect some, you're going to collect some.
There are people who are going to look at the ticket and go, I gotta pay that, right? Because it's a legal ticket.
Is there any, is there any data on this, what the...
I was going to ask. I was gonna ask, yeah, other towns?
What is the percentage that they actually collect on, how much goes into collections?
I, I, I don't have that, I can tell you that, you know, that Washington, it was the first one in Connecticut that has now, and now, each law, each state is different in terms of reporting, uh, does it go to DMV, does it not? Right now, I can only speak of how the statute was written and the limitations that we have. Selectmen, Posel, you brought up a good point about, you know, disadvantaged communities. We can do all of this, we can get all of our data, but it still needs to be approved by CT DOT, even if it wasn't gonna go on Main Street. If, if we put it on, you know, case app, DOT would still need to approve it. And I, and I wanna bring to your attention that limitations of placements of A T E S D S, which are cameras, in economically disadvantaged communities. It could be a reason that the CT DOT doesn't approve. I'm not saying that, I'm saying it's a possibility, I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but I bring up your point, disadvantaged communities, could the DOT signal and say, you're not getting one in Winstead? We don't know that until we actually submit our application, but I want you to know that we could be going down a road where the door gets slammed on us, you know, on this.
Yeah, it'd be cheaper to pay for a police officer to sit out there every day as an extra person on a shift, than what you would end up paying out of this.
I, I think, you know, well, one of the things, Kent, the town of Kent is having a public meeting on this tomorrow night.
I was actually just gonna say that.
So if anybody has time tomorrow night going out to Kent, might be an interesting place, place to see it. Uh, which, and because when we talked about this, the last time I talked about, they were struggling with this process as well. Um, so, that, that's one thing, and, I mean, there's a whole process of this, I think, that has to be understood. The Republican American had an online poll the other day about speed cameras and, you know, it's not a scientific poll, just people click on it and I don't know how many times, but it was sixty, sixty, uh, forty in favor of the cameras and forty against the cameras. Not everybody in the state legislature voted for this, so we know that it's not supported everywhere. Um, and so is it something that, uh, does the state statute say that the town has to have a town meeting? And the town meeting has to vote on it, is it something that this board has selectmen enact? Um, do we need to have a public information hearing as, if we, if this board chooses to keep going forward? Is, we have to, those kinda things have to get set up, so I guess maybe that committee you're working with has to do some of that, like framework on this, besides the fact that, you know, what the speed camera costs, all the framework for the collections, all the framework for the public first doing this. I, I think we need to framework the whole thing, um, to make sure we know where we're going, because like when you talk about Main Street, you talk about between, you know, the west end and the east end, it, you know, the people that, when you live in town, how many times do we go on forty-four, we just go on that stretch. But that's not twelve thousand cars a day, so we got all of them coming from the west, we got all of them from the east, crisscrossing town the whole time. So I imagine a lot of the collection will be for people that do not live in Winstead. Uh, we know that North Main Street up by the sewer plant has had some ugly, ugly accidents, so that might be another place we wanna have, have that camera. Um, so I think that framework needs to get built out of this before we, uh, go too far down the road and, you know, and, uh, and, and see where we're going.
So, it, it's great, cause each one of all of your questions has led me to the, to the next part of what I wanted to say. So, what are the, the next steps? And there is a process, and it is a lengthy process, and as I said, even at warp speed, we're looking at, you know, midsummer before, you know, we could possibly get one. There is an ordinance that is required, there is public hearings that are required. Also, when it comes to the revenue that we could possibly generate, that, that can only be used to, uh, slow down speed. It can't be used in terms of, so what, with that, well, of course, they say this, what Daqra says is that what towns are doing with their revenue is they're buying more cameras. Um, that is an option, um, you could do other things to help slow down traffic, but the money can only be used to slow down traffic. It can't be used for general fund to fund, you know.
That's by state statute?
Uh, that is by state statute, that is correct, yep.
Could it be used for policing?
It can be used for policing, cause that would be slowing down, but you do wanna make the connection of, okay, you know, you would have to, in my eyes, probably hire a, you know, traffic patrol officer, and their only job is to enforce ordinances and speed and, 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 and all of that. Um, so it is a process. Why I wanted to bring, I was excited, as sometimes I get with some of the stuff we, we stumble upon, was I wanted to see everything that I had just stated to the board, and there were some, some scary stuff. I wanted to see if everybody was still, yep, I still think we should, you know, look into doing this, or you said a lot of things that scare us. Um, there's gonna be, you know, a lot of investment and time. By no means is that a complaint, cause I think this is something that the town may wanna look at. The other thing, and, and, and I, and I apologize, we have to identify our zone, with signs as you enter it and signs as you go out of it. For eighteen months, we can't move the camera. The camera has to stay, and if after three years, we have to reapply to have that camera stay where it is, in eighteen months, we have the option to move the camera, but you're resetting the process all over again. Going to the DOT, getting all of your traffic stuff, and, and this isn't, this is by state statute. Statutes can change, they can improve, but I want to let everybody know, well, we'll put it here for a week and then we'll move, we can't do that. And we have to really identify that these vehicles are entering this traffic enforcement zone with a sign as you go in, and there's a sign as you go out.
It'll be known as the acceleration sign when they go out. Question, Paul, do you, Washington's had theirs how long?
Uh, two weeks.
They're not gonna be very helpful, I was curious about, you know, what's the revenue been?
You're, you're, you're thinking what I am, data, yeah.
Um, I, I will note that the company that we've, uh, have a meeting coming with up on Thursday, they're presenting to the COG, um, on Thursday, and then I've scheduled a private one-on-one meeting with them after the COG with, um, with our state representative, um, who may have spoken not as in favor of them. Um, so I'm just trying to get a handle on all of it. But I think it's important that we bring the state in to see if we can possibly improve the statute of allowing towns a little bit more flexibility. I think you all brought up some good points, what if we can't collect, why isn't it reporting to DMV, different things like that? So, you know, having all of us sit down and, and, and obviously find out about a different provider.
Personally, I'm gonna wanna see some more, some more data on this, even if it's out of state data, similar sized towns, whatever. Um, this is all generated because we all do agree for sure that there's a problem on Main Street. So, while we're working on this and whatnot, I, I think we need a backup plan, okay? This isn't gonna work, but we still gotta slow traffic down on, on Main Street. If we determine that it's gonna be too expensive, it's just not worth the headache, what else do we do? How else do we slow them down on Main Street?
I think this starts the conversation.
It's identified as a problem, for sure.
We have our new committee, um, that will be looking at different ways. And, 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 you know, I, I heard all of you at several meetings of, you know, how do we slow down traffic if we go to the DOT? You know, is that something we're gonna be able to unlock in a year, two years? I'm gonna be truthful, probably not. You know, it's that line dieting, you know, slowing traffic down, it's, it, you know, DOT, it, it's, it's going to take a lot of effort and a lot of time to get them to buy in to all of this. I know there is a new commissioner where at one time, DOT was, we wanna just move traffic as fast as we can, obviously within safe limits, but they weren't ever thinking about, you know, transit-oriented development districts. I think their new appetite and their new approach, they may, it may not take us twenty years to slow down traffic, but I don't think it's something we're gonna be able to do in a year or two.
In the meantime, in the meantime, and let's back up a year. We, we brought up a problem on Main Street, and a bunch of the selectmen here had asked that maybe Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, we park a cruiser visibly with the lights on on Main Street, correct? We have several cruisers sitting out back now, doing nothing, that run, we could start, park them there, just put the red and blues on, because if you're coming from Norfolk, you hit forty-four, you see red and blues, what's the first thing you do? Is you slow right down, right? Um, I personally have not seen a, a car. On Main Street with the red and blues on, and once or twice, I've seen him run a radar.
This has been a request from this board.
A couple times.
Uh, numerous times. I don't know, how do we, um, how do we get that to happen? Do I, do we have to go out and get the keys ourselves and pull it up there, or how do we get that to happen?
And, and to, to, to add to Paul, right?
Cause I'm happy to do that.
And can you get me, and can you get us the data? How many times since, since our request, over a year, over a year ago, how many times have they run radar on Main Street?
I think you can safely relay to the chief that we'd like that to happen immediately.
And frequently.
And frequently. Cause it's a pretty low-cost way to slow down traffic, to park a car, we have a lot of cars, we park them in this little alleyway, to park it there would slow down traffic. I will tell you myself, coming down Raleigh, when it was parked out in front of the repair facility, it slowed me down. And it wasn't even on.
Didn't have an engine in it.
No, and the lights weren't on.
It's happened to everybody in this room where you've been zooming along, you see red and blues up in the distance, and just instinctively, you would, you would immediately back off the gas and touch the brakes a little bit to see what's going on. I've had it happen on backroads with reflectors, people put the red and blue reflectors on the mailbox. I see them in the distance, I immediately slow right down, cause I'm thinking, well, this is gonna cost me.
So, I, I've heard this board loud and clear, and in fact, you're, you're all obviously welcome in, in my office at any time. If you're on a post-it note and you're on my monitor, it's something that needs to be addressed, it needs to be done. A post-it note that has been on my monitor for many months now, is I want two police cars parked, I want one down here and I want one up in Winchester Center as well.
That's fine.
Constant reminder, and, you know, I know we, we, you know, we have a community up there, and I know you're all supportive of that. There is a post-it note that reminds me to remind the chief that I want a, a, a cruiser on Main Street and also up at Winchester Center, cause I agree with you, I do believe it slows.
People on Highland Lake wouldn't object to in the summertime, maybe you, you move one around the lake once in a while, just leave it parked with the, with the lights on. Um, and also tickets.
I, I was gonna say the same thing, a ticket or two, I know.
Well, you know what the funny thing about this, Paul, is, we can have that parked out there, right? But once in a while, you could leave that car out back and actually put a cruiser out there with a cop in it with a radar gun. So now they're like, I've been by this car three times, big, big deal, there's nobody in it. But guess what, next Friday, you come whipping through town, and the light, and the car pulls out and comes after you, well, that's.
So we've heard from the community on multiple occasions here about the concern. Main Street's what usually comes up, but there's other areas as well. We've asked, you've asked the chief to get it done, I'm curious why it hasn't gotten done.
I will get that answer.
You got another problem though, too. If it's unmanned, you're gonna have to keep the car running to keep the lights on, or else it's gonna kill the battery.
Well, well, but they run, they run all the time anyway.
Whenever I come in this front entrance, whenever I come in this front entrance, there's one or two cruisers sitting out here on the side just idling.
Yeah.
Nobody in them, just running.
Right, cause it takes too long to boot everything else up.
But just, just warning you, the gas price is gonna be a little higher too.
Well, I mean, there's, there are battery packs.
Yeah, but they do have bigger batteries.
Those lights draw serious voltage, amps, cause I do that.
But we're not doing it twenty-four seven either, Troy, they're sticking it out there.
We're trying to get off the rails here.
I think the point's made.
Point's made, point's made, yeah.
The only thing I'll say is it also might help with drunk driving.
Definitely.
As a, as a warning.
Yep. All right, moving on to item eleven, citizens' comments, the board of selectmen welcomes public comments.
Steve Robertson, Seventeen Hamill Drive. And first of all, I'd like to thank the board for taking up the revision of, uh, ordinance three sixty-seven. You know, I talked about that, reported it first to the police department back in November, and then I had the privilege of speaking with Paul Hamilton about it, and he got right on it. And I understand that these things take time. And who wants a tractor trailer parked in their neighborhood, in a residential area where, you know, you're a homeowner, right? Nobody does, let alone a, uh, a semi tractor that's in somebody's driveway at least fifty percent of the time in addition to that. So, you know, maybe I'll start calling Hamill Drive Hamill Truck Stop. But, uh, that wasn't the main reason that I reported it first to the police. It's a traffic safety hazard. There's a elementary school bus stop, you know, twenty feet away from where this truck is parked. There's always cars parked directly across the street from that tractor trailer. Therefore, the street becomes a one-lane road, right? And so it is a safety hazard. We've got another, uh, resident of Hamill Drive here, and she has grandchildren that, uh, I don't know the status now, but they used to go to that bus stop. I don't know if they are driven to school now or not, but, um, once again, I understand it takes time to get these things through. Um, but my thought, and I think any reasonable person on Hamill Drive's thought would be, as soon as the ordinance is in place, since it is such a safety hazard, not only for cars turning into Hamill Drive, but also little kids at a bus stop, that they don't get a warning, they get a twenty-four hour notice that you've gotta move that trailer truck, or you're getting a ticket. You know, I think twenty-four hours is reasonable in that case. I, you know, at first I was hoping this could be compartmentalized, that that issue would be separate from all the other trucks and, you know, and, or vehicles, I'm sorry, involved in the ordinance, but, uh, you know, things work differently than sometimes. I have perception of how I would like them to work. So, I just would like to make that comment so that you know how we feel about this, and I'm not the only one on Hamill Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Commander, you want?
I'll actually keep my cover off, cause this is myself, not anything from Veterans for Wars, nor the District Five of Connecticut. Uh, my name is Daniel Matthews, I live at one ninety-seven Oak Street. I worked downstairs at the police department for almost twenty years, for any of you that do not know me, all right? I've also worked in this community as a volunteer for almost thirty, on our fire department, as well as many other aspects throughout the community. Um, when it comes to the police officers downstairs, I have seen them when they've almost been at fully staffed and fully staffed. And I will tell you, even at twenty, with their five days on, two days off, five days on, three at eight is off rotation, the max amount of police officers you're gonna see on a shift when they're plus up is four to five, typically five on the day shift, four on the eves and midnight, if you're lucky. Twenty is nowhere near enough staffing for our poor men downstairs, so I hear your concerns, and I hear what you guys are looking for, but I can tell you firsthand, sitting down there, that those officers are usually out, they are usually patrolling. But when you have two police officers and a sergeant who's also out patrolling himself, even as a supervisor, there is not enough manpower, and that's unfortunate where it is. Again, I live on one ninety-seven Oak Street, I get parking issues, I get parking concerns. My street's a drag race, come on, come by there any day after high school gets out and look at the kids going back over to Colony Drive. So I get that concerns, I happen to own an antique. My antique motor vehicle, to classify it for you using the terminology you guys used tonight, weighs twenty-five thousand five hundred pounds, it is an antique. I understand the concerns, it does have air brakes, so that folks are aware. I do understand the concerns of the folks on Hamill Drive, but that ordinance you've brought up this evening is gonna have indications on others within our community that we may not be thinking of. I've been a firefighter for almost thirty years for this community, and a few times, one of those antiques I've been looking to get is an antique fire engine. What fireman doesn't want an antique fire engine, correct? And that will hurt me if that ordinance goes into effect, cause again, I live in a residential area here within our community. The vehicle being parked on Main Street, it's an awesome idea, selectmen. However, two aspects you need to think about are the lights and the drawdown on the battery. Yes, at one time in this community, we had a vehicle set up for that. We had separate batteries activated for the lighting system, and we found that that motor vehicle was vandalized over and over again. And the cost to do the repairs in order to keep it up to look as an active patrol vehicle ended up costing more. as an active patrol vehicle ended up costing more money than it was worth. I think that's a great idea. But you have to be aware that there is gonna be vandalized to that apparatus. The other problem is you have to move that apparatus, whether it's dead or alive. Somehow, I, I heard a comment about no motor. Still gotta move it, how you gonna get it there? So, I think that you folks are doing a great job. I don't come down and speak often because I don't want to inject onto your positions that you guys are doing a good job. But we have to be aware of every indication on the steps that we're taking forward. I'm always available, you can ask any of the selectmen, whether Democrats, Republicans, whether it be the town mayor or the manager. I'm always available, uh, this is off the top of my head, I apologize. But, um, I think we need to think. And I hear that you're making comments in that path, Paul, so very good. But we need to think about that before we take steps forward. Because the men and women downstairs are working. And I could tell you again firsthand, even at that twenty person fully staffed, we had a vehicle downstairs that we purchased off of a grant. It was a patrol vehicle. The only thing that vehicle could be used for was traffic enforcement. We have a special assignment during the summer of the motorboat up on Highland Lake. I believe, uh, Selectman Perez mentioned that. We have a hard time filling that position because of the lack of manpower downstairs. We've had special assignments downstairs for motor vehicles where we've had one, two, or three officers specifically being on that because of grants. But we can't continue it. So we have to find alternate funds or staffing for those personnel downstairs or we're not gonna have any effect or long-term effect on that problem within our community.
Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Diane Ranson from Thirteen Hill. And just in response to Mr. Matthews', um, remark about hurting his, I don't know how many, uh, axles or whatever it's, it's implied to. But there's about a handful of towns around Connecticut that have the tractor trailer ordinance in place. And just, maybe this might make it a little bit easier for some of the vehicles, so it doesn't affect a whole range of people. But like this is Enfields, for example, and it's, it goes by axles, like two axles or four axles, which I don't know what I'm talking about, but some of you may. That's part of their, their ordinance that can't, uh, can't have more than two vehicles, it can't be obstruct, you know, obstruct, obstruct traffic. And then they just have it like A and B, and then part of B. And then just one part of line B just says, um, I just lost it. Let's see, this is, you know, it, it, it also exempts all vehicles like tractor, you know, um, garbage trucks and moving vans and all that. Excludes all that. But it does say, just one little sentence, that no tractor trailer will be allowed to park overnight in a residential area. So it just takes that. So, I just thought if, you know, just to make it, instead of all motor vehicles over so many towns, if it's axles make any difference or not, I wasn't quite sure. So I just wanted to, you know, go by other ordinance in the towns. Like there is a handful of, in Connecticut that do have this already. But it is, it's annoying and it's, it's, it's very dangerous for the people coming down the hill. They can't turn in because you can't see. And I'm just afraid for kids in the summer riding bikes. Because if it's there, you can't see. You can't see when you're coming in and it makes it, that part of the road is just one lane. So, just so you know.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Jamie Coligan, two oh seven East Wakefield Boulevard. Um, with regards to calling the police department's phone number at two seven two one. All calls go through central dispatch, so you can't really get anybody downstairs here. So, would the central dispatch convey people reporting, you know, on sidewalks and, and whatnot? That was my only concern. Because I tried calling and I got central dispatch, so.
I can answer that. I call that number constantly.
Okay.
And, um, they ask my name and my address and any information I have about the vehicle.
Okay.
And I give them as much information as I have. I usually take a picture.
Picture, okay.
Um, and yes, they do act on it.
They do, okay, very, thank you.
I did speak with the chief of police today with regard to the process. And he also suggested that, again, encouraging all citizens to use that number. So, please, use the two seven two one number.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Item twelve, selectmen's comments and reports.
So I actually would like to make just a couple of comments on some of the things that we've heard, I think, tonight. So first of all, from the policing standpoint, I think this board's been very supportive of our police department. We're proud to the fact that after two-year delay, they have a contract that's, that pays them in a way that they should. I'm, I for one, if the budget allows it, would love to increase that number from twenty. Uh, I know the chief has asked for that. We had an incredibly difficult budget season last year and I expect this one to be equally, if not worse. So I don't know what the budget's gonna allow, but I would love to see the staffing improve there, certainly. To this ordinance, uh, three sixty-seven, I think we've been, tried to be very thoughtful about what we're doing with it in terms of, you know, tractor trailers encompass just giant eighteen-wheel, how many axles, one, two, three, four, five axle vehicles typically. They're not the only hazard parked on residential streets in terms of width and blocking light, uh, sight vision and, you know, obstructing safety. So I think we tried to encompass a little bit beyond that. I don't know what your antique is. And I don't know how often you park your antique on the road because we're, we're speaking specifically about stuff parked on the street. So, anyway, I think we're trying to be as thoughtful about it because I realize that it does have implications to people beyond just tractor trailers. And, and I think, you know, certainly, um, we have another meeting of public hearing on this topic. So if, if people are concerned about specifically what we've put here, I think we'd love to hear it, so.
Yep, I just wanna throw this out, especially since Hamish was here. Uh, the winter lecture series is coming up, actually. Um, it's gonna be three Saturdays, uh, January, February, and March. Um, this one coming up is Liberty and the American Experience on the eighteenth. They're at the library at ten thirty to twelve, there is refreshments. The one in February ought to be really interesting. It's about, uh, which town is it, the Winston Mail Wars? It was about the, where to put the post office in town. Cause I guess there was wars back in the day there. East End, West End, or whatever, we're having issues. So that ought to be really interesting. So, just wanna throw that out to the public.
Thank you.
And last, if I can real quick, um, Dan, back to you. You, you mentioned up here you didn't wanna interject in our business, don't. Personally, for me, please don't ever feel like you're interjecting. If you have comments and input like you gave us tonight, I'm for one new. So any information you have that you could pass along to me, I'll, I'll soak up like a sponge. When it comes to history, stuff we've tried in the past, whatnot, I'll, I'll never, never feel like with, at least with me, that you're interjecting. I'll always take, take the advice.
Anyone else? I'll just close it out. Happy New Year to everyone as we go to executive session. I don't know how long it'll be, so if you're not here, have a good year so far. Item thirteen, executive session, discuss personnel matters. Make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
Uh, if I may, uh, what board members and the town manager?
What the board members and town manager?
Would be the motion.
In one minute.
Eight thirty-eight. Cause that's usually the end. All in favor?
Ah, yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. If you guys go past an hour, just tell me.
I don't think we will.
Okay.
Just give us details and stuff.
Okay. If you don't see me, just tell me what time the meeting ended.
You got it.
I'll send you as well.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
How you still remember?
Oh.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Yes. I've seen a lot of them. They never choose the right time.
Yeah. (laughing).
So, so how do you still, that's what I'm always saying, like, a lot of people don't always know all the state statutes or instances where they're referring to parking. So, like, part with a certain line, the hill, on top of the hill, you can't park where there's certain places to sign a law. Intersection, and from what they're stating, it sounds like a truck or trailer is probably too close to the intersection also. Because I drive the big red truck, again, I'm still one of the fire department. If I didn't get down here and drive, I didn't need to pass down. I heard their complaint about the vehicle parking for the truck, which everyone parks second, is actually parked at least. I do understand. I straighten them.
And you're not, and no more, I think the whole thing has to be.
Oh, okay. I make sure it's a dry trailer. It's always been bad since the fifties.
I do.
And, and I feel, and I've seen a lot of them. They're there, and you're better.
I can.
Good, how are you?
Okay.
Good. Good to see you.
Still not done, but I'm done. It's done. I don't know why he's talking.
I see a truck.
Really?
It's the greatest.
You're still trying to navigate our community.
Let me go outside, because we're on.
Even on my tour of fire department, I've been a fire department here for twenty nine years, I'm still out here. Here it comes because I know our community needs it because it's with people to put it equal to one or two more officers in. We'd be very strained on our community's budget. And it can't because of your, um, full certification. Because of the certification, especially officers, I have that now, even an officer, um, from what I heard the other day, that became a reserve officer. He's a sworn officer, retired, repair, that is willing to maintain, and I did, or as per EM dispatch, or officers, for all of that. I was willing to maintain my certifications. So that when they needed help and I was available, I could come in and, and I was before they come to dispatch, but I could come in and fill in for shit because I'm a dispatcher. And because I maintain my certification, it's gonna be the same thing. And, you know, it's a reserve officer, and I would love to see us more, or, or retired officers here. But if it is, you know, a lot of people, area of the city, this officer, his child still is.
Sure, really cool. I'm just.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, yeah, traffic enforcement is different too. There is different things, like, without being a sworn officer, you know, parking control authority, and, um, you know, like, like I said, it, it got to the point where it was tough where, yes, her, her citations pay for her pay. But they don't always cover all the expenses of that, so, you know, you've, you've got that. But having someone out there physically doing that daily wasn't deterrent. A lot of times it's broken windows, and then you gotta replace that window because otherwise the interior parts are locked. And there was a non broken window.
And then executive session has to be specified, and then we do it then.
No, we tell them first and then we'll do it. Because I think we can based on what we know.
These Mondays, no dinner, they do hurt.
I give mine back every week.
I forget, sir.
It's my way of helping saving the planet.
Everyone all set?
All right, we're back from executive session at nine twelve P M. We have no action to take at this time.
That.
Attention is adjourned.
Second.
Thank you Troy, thank you Bill, any discussion, all in favor? Good night, thank you.
See y'all in two weeks, if that's okay.
Oh yes, there you go.
Good. See, I can't, on the demos, I can't.
Yeah, yeah, because you can't assign it to yourself.
I can't assign it to myself, so I can't use the app. Like, I could see mainstream from here, I could actually hit the button on the remote.
It's gonna be cold.
Did you start your car?
Yeah, I did, I did.